We had a busy board meeting. So excited to see so many faces here today. We've got a lot to celebrate today. Excited to celebrate retirees and all sorts of good things. Excited to celebrate the last board meeting with the mask. Do you hear it? Yay! Lord willing, Lord willing. Good, well, let's start off. I'm going to call the meeting to order and then we've got some honoring to do and then we'll go into the normal agenda. But our first is to honor our long and loyal service from Mays Davenport to the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees.
So we weren't sure if you were going to show us.
No segment lost.
But we certainly are glad that you're here today. We've been glad that you've been here for the last nine years and well beyond that with your service to Prosper as a parent, but also as a board member. And as I said in my video last week, your level of discernment has been so appreciated and so applauded. There's never a moment when we're having a discussion that things are not, that are completely on our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. And for that, I want to say thank you so much. So here's an award for you. This can go on your mantle.
That's fine.
Let your wife know. That will be placed right in the middle. And then we also have put together a journal for you. And so there are a lot of signatures of just different individuals who have been along this journey with you for leadership. So we wanted to give you this gift. But we have one other gift. So many of you probably don't know this about Mr. Davenport, but his very last child will be graduating next year. And so here he is. His term has run out on the school board and one of the perks of being on the school board is that you can hand your child their diploma, which is a huge honor. And so what we would like to do is make you an honorary board member in May of 2022 to be able to hand your son his diploma. So that way you complete all kids and your wife will be happy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, buddy. Just a couple of words. We've been in Prosper 20 years since we moved here and all four of our kids went K through 12 and with Lucas graduating next year. But, you know, I've just been blessed to be a part of this district. And as I've come around and looked at these meetings and who's in the room, there are so many of you that our kids had in the classroom or you were principals. You know, principals. And one of the things that I know has always been on our mind is we've invested in the teachers. And as you've moved up and you've come into leadership roles, it's so imperative to continue the culture of Prosper by having each one of you be leaders within this district. And it's great to have new blood come in and bring new ideas. But to continue on the culture that Dr. Watkins and now Dr. Ferguson continue on is just so important for the board to be investing in each one of you and seeing you grow into those leadership roles. And for that, I'm very thankful and grateful. And I will miss the Chick-fil-A. I will miss the raw pork. And Hannah, you will not be able to worry about me sitting in my chair at graduation.
Till next year.
Till then, yeah. Very much, thank you very much. And I know you've got a great hands with Dr. Ferguson and the great amount of growth that we're going to have. Drew, good job and you'll do a great job on the board. Thank you.
I'd also like to have you stay with us for the entire end of this board meeting if you'd like to. But if you choose, you can.
I am going to say to honor these retirees. I asked Lauren if she wanted to say for the public session, but we're just stopping.
Next point, we have the swearing in of our two new board members. So Mr. Beavers, replace four and we'll have Mr. Drew Wilborn. Yes, and raise your white hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Bill Beavers, do solemnly swear.
I, Bill Beavers, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Prosper ISD School Board Trustees.
Of the Office of Prosper ISD School Board Trustees.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state so help me God.
And of this state so help me God. Thank you. Yes, man. I would love to.
There's the. You don't have to take your mask off if you want. Everybody ready? Nice job. Thank you. And Mr. Drew Wilborn, place seven. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Drew Wilborn, do solemnly swear.
I, Drew Wilborn, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Prosper ISD School Board Trustees.
Of the Office of Prosper ISD School Board Trustees.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state so help me God.
And of this state so help me God.
All right, is everybody ready? All right. They all have the best time.
You can say the prayer now. All right.
More celebrating?
More celebrating. So last month, we had the honor of recognizing some of our most outstanding staff members in Prosper ISD at three banquets, three nights in a row. And all three nights were amazing. And we really enjoyed honoring these teachers and care professionals who have given so much of themselves to our students and to our staff. But Mr. Bridges and the school boards and Dr. Ferguson wanted to honor our top care professionals and teachers publicly because they deserve it, right?
Amen.
They've already gotten their gifts. So don't feel like we're not giving them anything. Because every year we give out some exciting prizes and they did get those exciting prizes. Our District Care Professionals of the Year for Elementary. One of the most spirited winners. And then Sharon.
Oh, it's just me. Oh, which I have. Most always in here between you. All right, is everybody ready? Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. See, Mr. Connor wasn't here to do this one. Here they are. And this year was the very first year that we honored First Year Teachers of the Year. Those of you who have been in education know that that very first year is a little. Doing it in a COVID year was a little bit more challenging. So we are so excited that this year we're able to start recognizing these two amazing First Year Teachers of the Year who you would never think is a First Year Teacher. So for elementary, we have Amy Ruth Thager from Cockrell Elementary. And then we have Chip Peoples from Rock Hill High School.
It's their first year. Are you everybody ready? Thank you, congratulations.
And then our District Teachers of the Year for elementary and secondary, they actually get to do more work after this because they get to write about 10 essays for the regional contest, which are really fun. Once school is out, they go, yes, what else can I do? Write essays. So our elementary teacher of the year is Heather Clay from Cockrell. And then we have Rachel from Rock Hill High School. Get it? Thank you.
Got her writing? You have to write all the books.
And so let's give one more round of applause. So May is when we usually recognize our retirees and we have a few of them tonight. It's, you'll see how many years of service they have all given to our school district and to education in general. And I can't imagine doing that. We are doing it. So I did my best with masks to check you in when you were here. So I'm going to call out some names. If I didn't, there are some that I wasn't sure if I saw. So I'll call out the names because we'll recognize whoever you're here. So we're going in order of years of service in Prosper ISD. Our very first retiree is Roger Barr from Rogers Middle School. He has spent one year in Prosper ISD this time.
This time.
He has spent how many years before?
This still may be a little bit.
Okay, so eight years before, took a little break somewhere else and then came back. And then 32 years in education. Our second retiree is, so you have Rodriguez here? Okay, so Marcellus Rodriguez is at Prosper High School and she has spent three years in Prosper ISD and 23 in education. Weeman Martin, she actually retired in December. So we couldn't drag her back here. So she has spent five years in Prosper ISD and 15 years in education. She's probably, you know, on a beach. I know this one's here. Carrie Musselman has spent seven years in Prosper ISD. She even brought her daughter here for a little while and.
She brought me here.
She brought me here and then she spent 22 years in education.
23.
Oh, is it 23? So this is my 23 here. Ms. Marcella Green from South.
Education here at Prosper ISD. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, if you want to take pictures of your loved ones, they have earned this right. You have earned this right. Come on up. Okay, come on the other side. Thank you. Okay, every expression. Ready, here we go. Thank you. Our next retiree, I don't know if I saw Mr. pillars, is Roy pillars from Transportation. He has spent eight years in Prosper ISD and eight years in education. Our next transportation retiree is Mr. Kenneth Jeans, nine years in Prosper ISD and in education. All right, ready? Okay, thank you. Our next retiree is Mr. Coach Thomas Dan Goddard.
Eight years in college for 10 years and an education for almost 40.
Oh, yeah. All right, let's try to get one without the mask and then we'll have everybody enjoying you. Awesome. Everybody ready? There we go. Our next retiree isn't here with us, but she definitely has served Rock Hill Elementary with so much love and care. Gaila Wood, Rock Hill Elementary Nurse. She's spent 10 years in Prosper ISD and 25 in education. Ms. Shirley Bowman, with Special Education, has been here with us for 11 years and 27 in education. Ms. Bowman.
So good news for you, Shirley. You get for your remaining local lead days honoring your district law with value service to the district. $50 a day.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaila Bado, also with Special Education, has spent 11 years in Prosper ISD and 32 in education. Do you want to get it with us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Cruz McDonald, about whom we could tell so many fun stories. He has served 12 years in Prosper ISD and in education in the transportation department.
Hers is literally kept us from it.
Yes.
So literally. So good news for you. $50 a day for your local. So good news. It's right. Extra vacation money maybe.
Some of you might be wondering why some and not others. People who have served 10 or more years in the district receive this. Make it up for those for 10 or more years. All right, is everybody ready?
Got it.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I know.
Got it.
Congratulations, you got it.
What did we have some retirees tonight? Jolie Vincent, who has served as a coach and counselor at Prosper High School, 17 years in Prosper ISD and in education. All right. Got it? Thank you. Hey, Dr. Ferguson has to not cry. So next one, Sharon Manta from Rogers Middle School, 18 years in Prosper. All right, here we go. Yep, absolutely. Good gifts.
Something very well.
All right. Great, congratulations. Okay, and our last for the evening is Ms. Melissa Arrington, who has spent in education 22 or 27 years, 22 of which are in Prosper.
Yes, would you like to get a picture? Do you want to stick?
All right, is everybody ready?
Did you get this one? So the foundation of any good education comes from amazing educators and you just got to witness some of the absolute best. When I think about the commitment, the dedication, the love that they've shown over the years to Prosper ISD students, and not only students, but parents and their colleagues, I'm blown away. Absolutely blown away. And so when you look at this slide and you see 152 years in Prosper ISD, total years of service, as well as 323 years in education, that's a commitment like no other. And that is a gift, is an absolute gift in our world that we have great educators who are willing to give back at such a high level, no matter if they're making sure the buses are running or they're making sure math is being taught to the students. It takes every single one of us. So thank you. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you on behalf of all of the students you've served over the years. You have made a difference and you have had an impact. Thank you.
So what we're going to do at this time, because we want to make sure that we're honoring all of the great educators that we have focused in on tonight, is we do have a small reception in the back. So if you would like to make your way back there to pick up some goodies, we would love for you to do that. But we certainly know that many of you may have plans as a family to do something after this meeting. So certainly feel free to do that. But thank you. We'll reconvene in about five minutes. Right? And these are Suzuki Strings students who are going to perform this evening. We have this program at Windsong Elementary, as well as Johnson Elementary. And Mrs. Rachel Holt, who's quite phenomenal, and I'm glad she's not retiring, because we need her desperately. Our students want to perform and give you all, as the audience and our school board, a little bit of what happens within this program and the talents that these students display. And I'd like to say thank you to the parents of these students, too. There's a high level of commitment where they drive them all across the district to make sure that their students can be a part of this program. And parents, I want to thank you so much for your support, your amazing support for Prosper ISD, and certainly for your students, and we want to say thank you.
So, we have three short selections for you from the Windsong Ranch Suzuki Choir. And we're so happy that we get to share this moment. This is our fifth year of Suzuki, and we hope that you guys enjoy.
Awesome job.
Thank you. All right. Fabulous. What a great way to start. I know we have a lot of members of our town council here tonight. Thank you for being here, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure these young kids can perform for a nominal fee for you guys. Love to see those contributions. Anyway, let's go ahead and get started. I will open up the meeting with the invocation. Please pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather tonight. Father, we thank you for the responsibility that you've given us in this district to lead and shepherd and guide. And Father, we're just so mindful of the blessings that you put into our lives through Prosper ISD. We're so mindful of the great staff, the teachers, the administrators, the paraprofessionals. Lord, it's an amazing group of people committed to serving kids and conserving our community, Lord. And we're so grateful for that. We're particularly grateful for the years of service that we honor tonight. Lord, it's exciting to see such great legacies of service to our district, and we're grateful for that. Father, we also are grateful for the service of Maze Davenport, for his contributions to our district, and what a blessing he's been to us and to the kids. And Father, even to honor the Teachers of the Year and the Paraprofessionals of the Year. Lord, as they're at a different stage of their career, Father, we're excited to see them become part of our district, continue to perform and lead and to serve. Father, I pray for our community. I pray that you would watch over us and continue to bless Prosper ISD and the people that we serve, the students, the parents, the staff, the administrators. Father, I pray that you would give us, as a board, tonight, great wisdom and discernment as we deliberate the things before us. Lord, that you would guide our decisions and our conversations. They'd be honoring to you in all that we say and do. We pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, too, Mr. Bridges, I just want to point out to the audience, even though Mr. Willborn was just sworn in, he did not have access to the board packet until being sworn in. So, as far as him having the information well in advance, he did not. Of course, Mr. Beavers did, because he was already sitting on the board. So, I just want to make everyone aware, so that way they know what's occurring with you, and we're glad you're here.
Absolutely. Great. Okay, we'll enter the time of public comment. So, let me read off the script that I read before every public comment. "We now move to public comment section of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who've completed public comment cards this evening, which are accepted from 6:30 PM to 7:00 and are not transferable to other speakers. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is not an endorsement of the information shared by the presenter and solely provides the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Thirty minutes have been allotted for public comments, so we have 10 that have signed up, so we will have three minutes per speaker. As a reminder, please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to employee of the district or a specific student issue, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies DGBA Local, FNG Local, and GF Local. Each grievance procedure allows for an individual to redress grievances with the Board of Trustees. Additionally, although we never had anybody take us up on this, if there are more than five individuals who would like to speak on the same topic, you may choose to appoint an individual to speak on behalf of the group as provided in board policy BED Local. And finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda. I know it's probably a sense of, for those of you that haven't participated in this public comment, it's not an agenda item, we do not have an opportunity to respond since it was not posted. So, we may look like we're just nodding our heads and asking you to go on, but we can't respond. So, with that preamble, I will move through the list, and we will start with Ms. Shelley Creel. Please come forward. And we will, like I said, Mr. Beavers, will keep our timer for three minutes.
Hello, my name is Shelley Creel. My address is public record. I want to first congratulate Drew and Bill Beavers on winning their positions for school board. I wanted to speak today in regard to enrolling students, or re-enrolling students, for 2021 and 2022 school year. I noticed that the verbiage has not changed from 2020 to 2021. The same language that allows you to penalize- The same language that allows you to penalize a student for not wearing a mask in school is still in there. You announced at the school board meeting last month that it would be mask optional. So why wouldn't you change the language? Neither me nor my student should have to sign away their rights for you to penalize them if they are not wearing a mask, if they are indeed not required but optional. Please amend the wording and then we will consider signing up for next year. But again, why doesn't the board vote on it and make it official? So it is not saying we plan to make it mask optional. Instead, Prosper ISD is mask optional for 2021, 2022. Did I say that right? Yeah, 2022. This would show that you are listening to the constituents that have voiced their opinions every single month. I appreciate your time and thank you to our teachers and outstanding contributions to our students. I hope you have a restful summer. And thank you to the musical talent that just performed. Music speaks to my soul and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Creel. Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time to speak to us. Liz Lester? Lester?
I got it right the first time. I'll give that to you. My name is Liz Lester and my address is public record. First of all, thank you for making this school year happen. I truly appreciate it for my two kids who were able to go to school this year. I really appreciate it. Last week, I wanted to register my kids for school, much like Shelley, and also noticed in the handbook the verbiage surrounding masks. What concerns me is the masking requirement still being in the handbook. It needs to be removed. We know right now it's optional, but it could also change. We know the cold and flu season will return like it does every year. What is going to stop you from reinstating the mandate? In order for you to make the best decisions for our students, you have to have some support to back your decisions. I want to give you some data we do have, well-documented, well-run studies. All of these have been sent to Dr. Ferguson and the board for your review and education. One study with 30,000 kids and teenagers showing physiological and psychological effects, headaches, hypoxia, which is low oxygen, stress, sadness, luring impaired, fatigue, to name a few. Sixty-eight percent reporting these side effects within the first six days. The evidence of these side effects is clear and needs to be considered. Our kids have the right to learn at their full capacity. Studies that speak to the size of the virus particles and the size of the holes in your mask, explaining why a virus will slip through these holes because it is much smaller. The studies showing how masks are priming your lungs for inflammation and cancer pathology and causing immune suppression. When you are breathing in carbon dioxide all day, you are breathing in those microbes, creating a prime environment for cancer to develop. Another study showing the nano fibers from your mask that you are inhaling posing serious risk and inflammation in the lungs. Other studies showing those who wore a mask versus those who didn't. It showed no significant difference in infection rate from those who didn't wear the mask. Other data was sent to you to support this statement, showing states that implemented mandates, and the number of cases continued to rise. There are many more studies and much more data to review in the emails that I provided you. The point is, if you are uninformed about surrounding the data, science, and facts that exist today, you are doing our kids a disservice and it is leading to unintended consequences. There's clearly enough evidence to show you they should not be the best option for all. There's also plenty of science, data, and facts to show you the consequences. Ignoring this data and evidence is just willful ignorance. Please do not let fear be the driving factor in your decision-making around masks when cold and flu season returns. These should never be mandated ever again and remain optional, no matter what. All of this information will support keeping them as optional. There's a catchphrase being tossed around this past year, "Follow the science." This is literally the actual science surrounding masks, the couple pages of studies, data, facts, and science that I have sent you. Please review if you are not informed around this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. Appreciate you sharing with us. Thank you very much. Janelle Davis, I believe that's.
My name is Janelle Davis. My address is public record. As this school year comes to an end, I want to say thank you to each of you. Because of your refusal to unmask our children in the face of overwhelming scientific evidence, I started paying attention. Because of your refusal to communicate with me in any substantive way, I began reaching out to others. And because of your decision to pay a proponent of critical race theory and equity a quarter of a million dollars, I began digging deeper. And you can call it whatever you want, culturally responsive training, inclusion, diversity, whatever you want. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to do a little bit of research and figure out what you've brought into our district. Your lack of transparency and accountability has forced many otherwise uninformed and uninvolved parents like myself to get informed and get involved. Your hypocrisy and self-righteous attitudes are mind-blowing. Do you all not see how ridiculous and hypocritical you look taking off your mask to squeeze together for a photo and then putting them back together to go back and sit in your seats? I've seen post after post on social media these last two months of you all with unmasked, smiling, lovely faces while my son sits in a classroom for seven hours a day with a mask on and then tells me outside of school that he no longer feels comfortable with his face uncovered. You have psychologically traumatized hundreds of children. That is your legacy. I stand before you today imploring you to vote now to officially end the mask madness for next year. I will not register my children for school until the student handbook reflects such a decision. And I agree with the two speakers who have already talked about that issue, and I know there are others who will speak to it as well. I support this district. I support its teachers. One of them literally changed my son's life three years ago. And I'm proud that several of the teachers who were honored here tonight are actually from my children's school. We are very blessed. And because I support this district and its teachers, I will never be uninformed or uninvolved again. I will not let the aid of you destroy this district with progressive, divisive, destructive ideas and lack of transparent leadership. So thank you. I'm awake now. I'm informed. I'm involved, and I will never be silent again.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you for sharing. I appreciate you coming up here to do that. Stephanie, I can't read. Razor? Razor?
Razor.
Razor. One for one on the first try.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Razor. My address is fifteen... Oh my God, I forgot my address.
Twenty-four.
Fifteen twenty-four Grove Drive. Good evening. I think it was really awesome what we just saw here, all of those great educators and people who've made this district what it is for the past, some of them, twenty-five, forty, almost forty years. How remarkable is that? I also think, look at all of those great little children that we saw in that Suzuki program. How... That was so awesome and they looked so diverse and inclusive. I'd like to talk tonight about last month's meeting. We had these great students come in and talk about a student advisory board. And I thought, wow, how great is that? Our students are more informed than us parents. Wouldn't it be awesome if we had a parent advisory board? We get thirty minutes to talk before a school board meeting and then we have to sit here with our hands folded nicely like schoolchildren and listen to you all speak without any input at all. We can't ask any questions and when we do try to ask a question, y'all growl at us. No. I was so offended by that last month. Like, how dare you talk to us like we're peasants or serfs? These are our children. This is our community school. We all know, all the studies show that parents who are more involved have children that are better students. So why you would try to rebut us makes no sense to me. I understand we can't have four-hour school board meetings, but it's also why we need a parent advisory board. We need to know what's going on and not these benign emails about, oh, this student won an award and look at, we had a bake sale. No, that is not what we need to know. We want to know what's going on with curriculum. Y'all just approved a bunch of textbooks. I'm sorry, I didn't get made aware of that. Every other state I have ever lived in, when we got new textbooks, parents could come in and page through them. They were given two, three, sometimes four weeks to do so beforehand. We've got nothing. We sit here and we're told what our children are going to be taught, what books they're going to use. We have a transparency problem. The way to fix that problem is a parent advisory board. Please consider it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Lacey Wheeler. We have three Wheelers. Lacey Wheeler first. Or you can go into whatever order you want to go in.
My name is Lacey Wheeler and my address is a matter of public record. I'm actually going to be touching on what my friend and neighbor just talked about. On April nineteenth, y'all put on a pretty good show. There was a mention of, that's right, that's not CRT. That was really fun and interesting. I am imploring those watching at home, those here, anyone who has any questions, don't take my word for it. Don't take anyone's word for it. You don't know if you're going to agree with me. Do your own research. So touching on what my neighbor and friend just said, if you go to PISD's webpage, go to the school board agenda, you'll see that the agenda for the nineteenth, there was April eighth, there was text certification for 2021 new instructional materials. Now, if you follow that link, you go to allotment and text certification. There are eight pages of K through twelve instructional materials. You will see on there forty times Savus Learning Company LLC, formerly Pearson K through Twelve Learning. Please Google Savus. Go to savus.com. This was on this textbook's list forty times. Forty of Prosper ISD's next year's instructional materials are going to be from this company, Savus. So please look them up. You'll see on their webpage at Savus, everything we do, blah, 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 expand equity. You'll also see that there are two people who sit there on their board, one Teresa Santos Volk. Please look her up. You'll love what she has to say and who she is. She's on their page. You'll be able to find her, savus.com. Gloria Ladson Billings. She was a professor emerita at University of Wisconsin-Madison. Makes no qualms verbatim critical race theory. Why did you sit up here and say this is not critical race theory, but then approve forty textbooks for kindergartners through twelfth grade that have this company? Have you done your research? How did you find these companies? I want to know where these companies came from, why these are the curriculums that we need next year for our students. And I want to know how you're going to tell me when I can see with my own eyes and anyone can see with their own eyes, follow the links, do your own research, that they say and preach and teach critical race theory right on their webpage? That's my question. He actually has a time slot. I don't know if you want to group us together in the interest of saving time, but however you want to do it.
I'd prefer to hear what he has to say. Absolutely.
You know, last meeting, well, we all know what you did. It's suspicious how people suddenly start speaking about how they like masks. And one of the kids that you made speak was all fake numbers that you gave them. I actually took a survey and only two of twenty-two kids want masks. And that was my whole class. And throughout the district, there are hundreds of classes. So if you take my results and pretend each class had the same results because they would have similar results and do the math, that is thousands of kids that want the masks on and only nine percent that want them. So that is thousands of kids that you're torturing and only a few hundred that like it. And stop saying it is for the kids because it's not. We don't even like it. I thought we had your word, Holly. They lifted the mandate. Please stop this nonsense and be a good district that we would all like. Thank you for your time.
My name is Nathan Wheeler. My address is a matter of public record. Kind of want to remind you guys of who you guys are. You guys are representatives. As an adjective, it's a legislative or deliberative assembly consisting of people chosen to act or speak on behalf of a wider group. As a noun, person chosen or appointed to act or speak for another or others. Members of the board, you're elected to act on our behalf. Month after month, we have come and voiced our concerns only to be shown by those who are supposed to represent us. Month after month, you vote seven zero. Never one person bucking the system. Not one. Always seven oh. You're not representing us. Never. It's funny, last month I had an interaction with one of you guys at the Silos. She knows who she is, smiling, no mask on. Asked her point blank, did you advocate for no mask? Bounced around the question and finally walked away because she didn't like the situation. But you know what? She advocates for no mask, but here she is, sitting with a mask on her face.
Have a good evening. Who's next?
My gosh, that's... I'm sorry, we had to hear that. Well, I am so supportive of people that have different opinions, but my goodness. Okay. Can we see Samantha Kim?
Good evening. My name is Samantha Kim and my address is in the record. My children have attended Light Farms and Boyer Elementary Schools and now attend Reynolds Middle School. My family has lived in Prosper for the last five and a half years and we love this district. We love it. And that is why I'm so troubled by what is happening here. I recently came upon the district's frequently asked questions website and until recently, this was on its website. And I quote, "Diversity and Race Relations FAQ. What is being done by PISD to address cultural sensitivities for ethnic populations? Dr. Ferguson and the Prosper ISD Board, have, School Board, have invested in cultural responsiveness training with Dr. Kimberly MacLeod for all teachers and staff, which is making a tremendous difference in the culture of the district. This continues, this work continues with Dr. MacLeod doing coaching sessions with campus administration to work on addressing implicit bias and systemic racism within our schools." Yes, systemic racism in our schools? End of quote. What I read to you was recently deleted from the website, but that was on our website for most of this year. So I ask you, what cultural issues are we having in this district? And what is this implicit bias that you are referring to? How do you define systemic racism? Because the district is stating that we have systemic racism in our schools. Who is perpetuating this so-called systemic racism? Is it administrators, teachers, students, the parents? I don't know. If the school board and its superintendent believe that systemic racism exists in Prosper ISD, please provide specific examples. And if you really believe that the system is racist, please remember that you are part of the system. I'm saying, I'm not saying that racism does not exist. It exists. I've personally experienced it. But it does not exist systematically, systemically, in a basis of, and as a basis of every institution, program, or policy. I'm extremely concerned by this district's focus on race. References to implicit bias and systemic racism are core tenets of critical race theory. And I soundly reject any and all aspects of critical race theory. It is divisive, hateful, and promotes racism. The district is using diversity in ed to recruit diverse teachers for this district. Do you know what diversity in ed values? Their website states, and I quote, "Our vision is to create an equal opportunity for every student of color to be educated by a teacher of the same color and culture." Is this the vision that this district wants? Because I reject that vision. I don't care what race, culture, or color a teacher is. I believe our students deserve the best teachers, ones that care about teaching, reading, math, science, logic, and critical thinking. A teacher who will install a love of learning in students. And that is where this district's focus should be. So I implore you, please, please, take a hard look at this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kim. Thank you very much. Sarah Shaw.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sarah Shaw and my address is a matter of public record. First of all, many thanks for following the science in dealing with this pandemic. In doing so, my son, who's now senior, he will be graduating on Friday, he was able to experience an amazing senior year with no shutdowns, no deaths, and some semblance of normalcy. I thank you guys for that. My daughter graduated from Prosper High School in 2019. My daughter graduated from Prosper High School in two thousand and nineteen. She's now classified as a college junior. She talks really highly of her experience at P H S academically. She will oftentimes tell me that her college classes are easy because of the rigor that P H S has. She also talks about teachers who touched her life. Ms. Dotson, chemistry teacher, department chair, African-American female. Mr. Salas, Spanish teacher, Hispanic male. Ms. Ballard, P C I S teacher, Anglo female. And Officer Terry, student resource officer, who was like a big brother, African-American male. This combination of teachers represented Anglos, Hispanic, African-Americans, males, females, and it gave her a, um, just a, uh, well-rounded education, and I appreciate that. I mention this fact because these are a group of diverse staff. Our students are diverse, and our staff should mirror same. So all of our students have staffing that looks like them. It's hiring time, and greater diversity and inclusion is needed amongst our teachers, administrators, school counselors, librarians, and nurses. Just as our investment portfolio commands diversity, so does our staffing in order to remain successful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And although, uh, my last child will be graduating this Friday, I still plan to remain active in helping our district to be all it can be for all of our students. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. And Gwen Ray is our tenth speaker.
My name is Gwen Ray. I'm at three forty-one, Stephanie Lane. Tonight, I stand before you for the last time as a parent with students in Prosper ISD. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for coming alongside Marcus and me in raising our children. Had the honor of raising kids with many of you, worshiping with some of you, serving alongside all of you. On May twenty-first, two thousand and four, our family moved to Prosper. My first encounter with P I S D was a drop-in visit I made to Prosper Elementary School. The principal came out and greeted me and spent an hour answering all of my questions and calming my young mom putting her babies in public school concerns. Jana, your patience with me and love for my children set the foundation for our family in this district. Early on, Winnie Prosper was special. This is made obvious by the love shown to us by Dr. Watkins. He knows each of our children by name and stops for a hug or an essay when he sees them. When the second elementary school opened and zoning changes were announced, Marcus and I met with Dr. Watkins. He promised us both schools would be exemplary, and we would not be disappointed with the newly hired principal. Later that summer, we met this new principal on the playground of Rucker Elementary. A lifelong friendship was initiated amongst popsicles and playground equipment between our family and in our house, we call her Miss Dr. Ferguson. She has walked with us through some tough days and rejoiced with us on some really great days. The impact the teachers and administrators in this district have had on our family is far-reaching. All five of our kids are who they are, not just based on what Marcus and I have tried to instill, but on the teachings and life lessons they learned as students. I asked the kids to send me the names of the teachers and administrators who had been most impactful. There were over fifty on that list, so I can't read them all. Tonight, four of my five kids are here with me. And in a few days, all will be graduates of Prosper ISD. Caleb is a graduate of Baylor, Baylor University and is a police officer in the colony. Maddie is also a graduate of Baylor University, and she's returning to Prosper P I S D to be a teacher. Saber is a graduate of Tulsa Welding School, and he's not physically here tonight, but he's on FaceTime because he is serving the United States Marine Corps. Nico just wrapped up his sophomore year at the University of Oklahoma, and Michael will be attending Oklahoma State University in the fall. The education they received through P I S D prepared them well for their secondary education, but the relationships they forged with teachers and mentors prepared them for life. Marcus and I were talking the other night, and he said something I think fits us well in this new season we find ourselves in. We are transitioning from parents of kids in the district to supporters of kids who have parents in this district. We're your biggest fans. Thank you for helping us launch our crew well.
Right. Thank you, everybody who came and spoke tonight. Appreciate that very much. That ends our time to open forum. Am I got that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, yeah, let's move on to the next option. Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action regarding board reorganization and election of officers, something we do at the, after every election.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
After I wipe my eyes. Thank y'all very much. In regards to our board officers, I'd like to make a motion that Deborah Smith remain as secretary for this year. Vice President, Phil Beavers. And Mr. Bridges, or our president, to continue with the continuity that we already have.
Okay. Good, thank you for that. So motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Kelly, any question, comments? Anybody else wants to sit in this chair? All right. Okay. Well, it's a motion requiring a vote, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let's move into the consent agenda, and let you take over from here, Holly.
Okay, so we have the minutes of our prior meeting, which was April nineteenth, and then we had a special meeting on the tenth of May, which was to canvas the election, uh, so that we were within the guidelines of the election. So we need a motion on those minutes.
Yes, we gotta, let's, let's do the motion for the whole consent agenda. Can we do that, just to make it faster?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, our May enrollment, we're at nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eight students, and so that is certainly an increase, and we're hovering in around that twenty-six hundred mark, uh, additional students, which is such a great asset to us. As I tell all of our new employees, it's twenty-six hundred new opportunities to make a difference. And then we have our construction update.
Yeah, do we have any reason to think that's going to slow down next year?
Oh, no. No, by what the demographer is telling us, with vacant developed lots. The only thing that might is because building materials are getting extremely expensive, and so now families are being told they're probably looking ten to thirteen months before the home is complete. And as you all know, we don't allow the students to start school without living in the home. And so, um, that may kind of show a little bit of a difference, because there's just not much of a market out there for homes to purchase and to move into. And our construction updates. This is Jerry Pride, I think this new man is ready to move in. Um, so she's, yeah, she's shaking her head, she's ready to go. And then Reeves Elementary, as you know, we started a little bit later, so a little more construction needed still to make that deadline of August to open.
We'll be ready for both of those.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And they've got a huge team working on Reeves Elementary. If you ever drive by there, there's just cars lining the streets, so we will definitely be in on time.
Rhythm cuttings in August.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Alstern, I believe we have a fine arts student outcome report. Nice lead-in with the Suzuki Strings this evening.
We'll play. Start with my best card.
Well played, well played.
Who can beat little kids playing the violin, right? Good evening. My name is John Alstern, and I'm the director of fine arts for Prosper ISD. This is my second year in the position. Most of that time has been during a pandemic. And before that, I was the band director at Prosper High School, before many of you were on the board. Uh, but I just wanted to start off by, um, introducing myself and giving that perspective and really extend my thanks to Mr. Mays for, Mays Davenport for his service on the board and all the things that he was part of helping approve over the years. And, and so while we might not know each other yet, I look forward to many years serving. Welcome, Mr. Wilburn to the board. See, I'm working two things at once here, here we go. So fine arts handled this year like superheroes. That would be the Hayes staff, I'm not sure if Mr. Jones, he would be pleased to know that I'm featuring Hayes staff on the front. And that'll be the theme throughout my presentation tonight. So a little bit about us, I know Melissa Bellinger is here in the audience, she's over in pink. If you wanna wave, Melissa, she's our administrative assistant, replaced Robin Keegan Wolf. So not only did I, uh, experience my, my first year, um, as a fine arts director during the pandemic, but we lost our administrative assistant. She moved to New Jersey in the middle of that process, uh, while we were opening a high school and a middle school and an elementary school, just to put things in perspective. So who are we? Uh, we are a hundred and four teachers that, um, we, we cover the gamut, K through twelve. And, uh, we serve quite a few kids. So we're looking at eighty-eight point three percent of kids are touched by a fine art teacher in some capacity in the course of a school day. Now, a lot of that comes from our elementary staff, right? Because we, those, those teachers see those students on a rotation, and then they get to know the names of all of the kids. One thing that we talk a lot about in the fine arts is the fact that if we have the right hires, if we have the right music teachers, the right art teachers at that elementary, that we can shape the culture of a school, as I'm sure Ms. Thompson can agree with. So we try to impact culture on a positive note every day. So as you can see, our numbers, we're gonna go a little bit deeper into those numbers as we go through the presentation, but I just wanted to highlight that, starting off, we really are impacting a lot of kids. So we had no manual like anybody else, and so our, beginning of our year looked a lot like this. So come August, you know, most of the time during the, the shutdown, starting around spring break, I was busy on Google Meet interviewing people. So we went from seventy fine arts staff members to a hundred and four. So that was over a hundred Google Meets, so learning how to interview and really get a read on who are those people that need to shape our culture, who has the prosper heart, and doing that through a computer screen. It took some practice, but we got pretty good at it, and we made a lot of fantastic hires. So this was our, uh, our meeting, when we were putting our heads together for the first time in August, and we were trying to figure out what education was going to look like during a pandemic. So everything seems a little bit different now, we're talking about masks being optional, but let's just go back in time, it wasn't that long ago, we didn't even know how we were gonna have a class with sixty person, sixty people in person, and then ten on iPad with one teacher. So what I saw when I walked around to the schools this year were iPads. We bought a lot of iPads, we used the iPads that we had, we shared iPads. We bought stands for them, and you would walk into classrooms and you would see teachers teaching in person, and then turning and facing four or five kids on a screen, turn your cameras on, please, let me see that exercise, can I, who has it? And then they would call on them to answer questions about things that happened ten minutes ago just to make sure that they were there. So they truly were superheroes being two places at once. And keep in mind, most of the, our hundred and four fine art teachers are solo acts. They are the only, uh, theater teacher at a middle school. So there's not a backup, there's not somebody like, hey, can you cover this class while I handle this kid online? So they were truly juggling. So what did we do? Well, we reached out to our friends, we, we, uh, started a little cohort with our, our neighbors off of three eighty. So to our south, we're good friends with the Frisco Fine Arts Director and their team, and same thing with the McKinney team. And so we just started talking, and we started comparing notes. And so what we did is we came up with a think tank, and we, we selected a couple teachers from each discipline, and we put them in a Zoom call together, and we, we fed them some questions to prep their minds beforehand. And it was just basic things like, how are we gonna do this? How are you gonna integrate technology? Where do you stand on rigor? What are we gonna do with these kids? Are you gonna go to contests? Are you gonna go to, are you gonna have a concert? How are we gonna do all of the things that we do? Because fine arts is pretty messy, as you can imagine. There's a lot of side-by-side playing, singing, moving, dancing. There's not a clean fine arts activity. And so when we're talking about elementary art, or we're talking about high school choir, we had a lot of hurdles and a lot of things that we had to figure out in a short period of time. So in our cohort, we came up with a list of best, best practices and best ideas. We pushed that out to our students, and we just cheated. We just looked over each other's shoulders and compared notes as fast and furious as possible. And it was fantastic. And so a lot of those connections and relationships continued throughout this, this school year, and those PLCs started across three eighty. And we said, I don't care what district, we're all in it for the kids, so let's just help each other. So that, that was a positive outcome. So more on our learning outcomes. Let's start with our K through five elementary programs. So one of the things that we came up with real quick was that we probably should organize our specials. So we created a specials hub. And this, maybe some of your kids, some of the people in the audience, their students got to experience the, the specials hub. What this was, was a rotation. So because we only have one art and one music teacher per campus, you can't have an online designated art teacher or music teacher, for instance. So what they did was they take, they took turns creating weekly lessons. So we did a rotation through twelve teachers. And then, once they got through that cycle, they, they repeated it and did it again. They just did, uh, an assortment of games and activities and songs, and just things that would break up the school day, the monotony of the school day. So that was a positive result, positive outcome for those kids. Again, those teachers are serving ninety-eight hundred students. We did the same thing with music, so they had a weekly lesson. I'll keep moving. Suzuki music, as you saw, um, we started a Suzuki program. So Johnson Elementary, our waiting list was a little over a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety kids on the, the waiting list for Suzuki. So we, um, Rachel Holt called each person on the waiting list to see if they were still interested. Started with the first person and went down, and some of them had forgotten because it had been on the waiting list for three or four years. They said, uh, Suzuki what? And they were gone. So we filled our fifty spots for Johnson, and it has been a, a successful year. We were going to have both of the groups playing for you this evening, but it was just a little bit crowded, so we, you get to see them next year. For the fourth year in a row, finer, uh, the fine arts department, or the music department, was named one of the NAMM's Best Communities for Music Education. There's a survey that goes out, and we complete that every year. We talk about all the different things, our offerings for students. We, we just brag on our enrollment and all of our creative offerings from Suzuki music to some of the music classes that you hear about later. So, um, the great thing is, we get to celebrate that and put that on our signature block and, and show everybody, people that are moving into the community and, and our neighbors, that we are one of the best. So now we're gonna go into art a little bit. So here's our art statistics, our data. Right now, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred students that are in our classroom, grades six through twelve, and you can see the growth that I started tracking, uh, back in two thousand and sixteen, when I was still a band director. And, um, next year, we're forecasted to see about twenty-nine hundred. So this is one of the positives to- So this is one of the positives to having two high schools, is that we create more seats. So all the stories that you've heard about, hey, two football teams, two captains of a football team, two basketball teams, but we also have eight art classrooms instead of four art classrooms. So we're servicing, that's why you see such a spike in the enrollment numbers on that piece. So on the right, you can see some highlights for some students. Maybe you recognize some names of students that found success at the state vase competition. This is an example of our Wave of Inspiration at PHS. This is part of our Big Art Day by TEA. This is a District of Distinction thing that we have to do. There's a whole rubric of things that we have to do to achieve that. And some examples of student art. We also had a virtual art gallery for our online students. Alyssa Ferguson won an award and she actually has her artwork hanging in the Capitol for the Governor's Gallery. And it's very apropos, social poison. So everything from social media and headlines to wearing a mask, what that felt like to her. And it obviously creates a visceral reaction. You feel that reaction when you look at this. Same thing with this next one. This one bothers me. I don't like looking at this one. It reminds me of the pool thing that we had as a kid, the bubbles. And I would try to swim under it. It's a terrible idea. So this one won a vase gold seal. And one of the things that Judy C., our lead art teacher at PHS, what she told me was that when artwork evokes some kind of reaction, like, and it might just bother you. And like, this one bothers me, but I can't stop looking at it. That's how you achieve success in some of these high level art contests, because there is so much amazing artwork that is presented.
And that's a, that's a painting?
That is a painting, yes. This is, this is good news. So the Dallas Cowboys and Wingstop had this competition this year. And we took three of the top five, five finalists, our kids. So our kids might win all of those scholarships. They have not released the results yet, but you can see some more amazing work from our kids. And we did, in fact, earn the District of Distinction Award this year. And we are in the process of finishing it for next year. We look to get it again. And that is a lot of extra work from all of our art teachers. I'm going to move on a little faster because we have quite a few programs. Go a little faster here. So our Prosper ISD bands, we had another successful year. Even masked up, we were able to put on some reduced halftime shows. Next year will be a 5A and 6A state marching year. So we have a chance, usually it's every other year that we can qualify. We're trying to qualify both of our bands to the state marching contest next year. Our band numbers are looking decent. They're only showing a forecast of about 7% growth for next year, going up to 1,400 kids. Some really positive results in our UIL competition. You can see that on the right column there. And what we have found, and this is what I'm discovering from other districts as well, is that we are losing some kids in the, in the state of Texas, really, because I'm on a Fine Arts Director's Call. And so I'm hearing from the Houston guys and the San Antonio people as well. And we're losing some kids in band choir orchestra across the board statewide. And a lot of those kids tend to be the virtual kids, the kids that are at home and they don't have that direct contact with their peers and they don't have that direct contact. So even with an amazing teacher trying to reach out to you through the screen, you don't get that one-on-one connection. You don't get that feedback about how to hold your face or how to hold your hand or what the next thing is. And so it's kind of common sense, the group energy that it takes for these groups to be successful is key. And we did have a large percentage of our students that wanted to come back just for band choir orchestra to come up for their Fine Arts course. But we still, we still are losing a few of those kids. So we had four All-Staters this year. At Rock Hill High School, we had Kristen Neber on bass trombone. She's a senior. And Elijah Leonard, a junior trumpet player. At PHS, we had two, as well as Xander Bird, a senior trombone player. And Devin Pham, a sophomore clarinet player. That is the highest honor that you can earn. That basically means you're looking at potential free rides. So Xander Bird got a full ride to TCU on his trombone.
That's awesome.
Go Frogs. Choir, so choir, we had some firsts at Rock Hill. You know, there's so many amazing things, region accolades. We had our first area student at, at Rock Hill Choir. We're seeing some growth similar to bands, only about 7%. We are working on that. Next year, we'll start up our district honor choir again, which is an honor group. And of course, our elementary choir. So we have a lot of ideas. We've got some amazing new hires and we are seeing some, some significant growth at the middle school level. So help is on the way. We will see a rise in our choir numbers very soon. Cheerleading. Cheerleading had a successful year as well. We've hired new paraprofessionals to be the head coaches. Both of them have experienced running gyms. They understand everything from safety to choreography to how to run a team. And so while we have amazing students and we've got amazing things, we think that what we should see on the sidelines and in these results, we think we should have the best. And what Dr. Watkins told me when he hired me in 2014 was, as good as a four-letter word in prosper. We don't want to be good. So we have new leadership and we look to take cheerleading to the next level. Dance has seen an incredible amount of growth, okay? I'm not sure if you've gotten to see any of the concerts, but I've seen many of you at many shows try to make the dance concerts next year. It's pretty spectacular what we're seeing in dance. So we added sixth grade dance this year. And so with that came 238 kids signing up for sixth grade dance. Well, if you look at the result next year in 21, 22, we're looking at exponential growth in all of our middle school drill teams. We're going from 16 to 33, 10 to 24, 11 to 34, 15 to 38. So over 100% growth in all of those departments. And with that, Finance is going to support those programs by helping them with their uniforms to help lower the cost so that it's more accessible for more kids so that middle school drill team isn't quite so expensive. Okay, we're almost there. Orchestra, this is our Fine Arts Educator of the Year, Mr. Planks. He started the orchestra program six years ago. And this is Mr. Planks in action over on the left at the Rock Hill Aloha Pep Rally. That was their secret weapon. That's why they won the teacher lip sync battle. Orchestra growth, we're looking at, similar to band choir, 4% growth. We're going to continue to work on that. Exceptional showing at UIL contest. Theater continues to be alive and strong in Prosper ISD. Looking at about 9% growth for next year. Both groups advanced to the second round of the UIL one act play contest. And both are seeing significant growth in numbers as well. We also had a great showing with UIL academics at Prosper High School, taking first, second, and third, both in poetry and prose. And Charlize made it to state level in poetry. So that is a very positive sign. And then we added some general music classes. So these are classes, again, if I'm a kid moving into Prosper ISD and I'm not part of band choir orchestra, then my limit, what I can take for my Fine Arts credit are a couple of CTE courses like digital animation or floral design, or I can take theater, or I can take art. But there's no music classes that a kid could take if they're moving in from out of state, what have you. So we created some classes. So two years ago, I started History of Popular Music in the United States and those have grown. So we have large sections at both schools. And then this year, we started a music production class. So that's music and technology. There's 15 workstations at each high school. And that has taken off. Next year, we're looking at five sections of that music production class. And I sent out some examples of that work. And it's amazing, I mean, these kids, you understand the kids in technology, but when I started to hear the examples of what they were creating, it sounds like what you hear on the radio. It sounds like what you hear in commercials and then TV and then movies and I'm just blown away by it. So I'm really looking forward. My goal is to have somebody break through and, you know, make it to the next level. Billboard charts goes to LA and just takes over the world and then I'll go work for them. So we have about 197 students that we're serving in those general music classes. What's next? This is the last piece. This is a preview for the 2021 Fall Prosper High School Marching Man Show. And I thought I would end with this.
Joining us from San Antonio.
Joining us from St. Louis, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. Allster. Very nice job. Certainly impressive.
Yeah, absolutely. Incredible change over the last five or six years. Thank you very much. That's wonderful. Okay, that allows us to go ahead and get the entire consent agenda in one fell swoop. Entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Deb. Second. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Great. Okay, very good.
So then we're moving on to the upgrade that we're actually needing at Prosper High School. Our equipment is about 11 years old. It's the actual age of building. And so we're in need of going from analog to digital. And Dr. Bradley can certainly speak to more specificity on that.
Just, I believe Mr. Hanky told me that the cameras bought at PHS, as Dr. Ferguson mentioned, are 11 years old. They came out before the iPhone 4. And so we, it's time to upgrade. And the equipment has served us very well. Obviously, last year, we purchased a bunch of brand new equipment for Rock Hill High School. This is essentially just bringing the TV broadcast journalism program at PHS apart with what we installed at Rock Hill High School. So as you saw, we received multiple bids and this digital resources is the best one. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight.
Dr. Bradley, quick question for you. We got 11 years out of the old equipment, which I, you know, thank you for the iPhone 4 reference that says how well that went. What do we think that the useful life is going forward? Or do we have an idea on that yet?
Yeah, I'd love to say 20 years. I think if we get 11 out of it again, we will be blessed. As you all know, the technology advances are going well. What was interesting, the thing I would say about this, when we designed the Rock Hill Broadcast Studio, we learned a few things about, hey, how could we do this a little better? But we did not have to alter the space at PHS. So that part is encouraging so that whatever we can plug and play, we can. But the length of the use of the technology, I don't know. When we bought the cameras for Rock Hill and the stadium, because we had purchased a view for there as well, we were hopeful that we would get 10 years out of it. I believe that's the expectation here, but it's hard to say.
The great thing about the Media Support Group too, is their level of customer service has been phenomenal. So through those 11 years of saying, hey, we need this fixed or we need you to come out and, and get this corrected, they, they are right there to support us. And I think that's how we've gotten the amount of years we have gotten out of it because of their customer service. And that was one of the factors that we certainly wanted to consider.
Can you remind me, is that the same purchaser that we follow this stuff from for Rock Hill High School? Is it the same?
It is, right. Yeah, okay. I want to make sure before, yes.
Any other questions? We had the information in our packet. If anybody sees anything in there that caused you to have a question? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll start it.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, very good. Next on the agenda is the Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief. So this is actually money from the federal government and this is caused by the pandemic. And I wanted to bring this to your attention and we certainly have, I think I've provided you that very long list, but just for the audience, their sake, looking at the allocations that were actually given. Now, this is a process and there is an application that we have to go through. And as we're getting direction from Regent Tenor Service Center, what they're saying is, one thing you have to keep in mind, because it is federal government money, there is a Plan One, which are for schools that didn't open. So your schools like in California and other places that they didn't open their doors. And so that looks very different. Their plan will look very different than Texas schools that did open. And what they're looking for is safe reopening of schools as we get into the August time to open back up. Continuity of services for students, responding to academic, social, emotional, and mental health. And then an evaluation of our plan. And so we'll be engaging in that process to be able, one of the things that is a little, if you get ahold of this list, you may look at it and go, gosh, there are several districts around us that are peer districts and they're getting millions of dollars, where our grand total is $495,000 and some change. And it has, it's based off our economically disadvantaged numbers, which in Prosper ISD, we're at 8%. And so that's why there is the difference in the money when you're looking at a DISD versus a Prosper or even a Frisco, who got, of course, a lot more money than we did. Yes. Yeah, because even a Quinnlin equipment that are out in East Texas, super small places, they're getting millions of dollars. But again, more students that are on that brand reduced lunch economically disadvantaged list. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and what we'll be looking at is a resolution that we'll need so that we can go ahead and start that application process to access the funds and then to follow the guidance of our Educational Service Center on kind of our next steps and what we need to submit so that we can get those funds for our kiddos.
All right. What do we think that those funds might actually give once we get that stuff? I mean, are we talking a year out, two years out? Or does it go?
It is the federal government, Mr. Beavers. So there's always a little bit of sand in the hourglass with them. So to know that we're going to get it immediately, no. I will say, I would expect maybe by August or September, we probably have that nailed down. Because I know whenever we're doing our Title I Part A, we usually get results or this is the funding mechanism that we'll receive. And that's usually in about July. So I'm assuming they're probably on the same type of cycle. But this list, again, is very extensive. I mean, we were on page 100 in the Ps and the Rs. So you've got schools, charters, and our public schools across the state of Texas that are trying to access this. And you also have the nation trying to.
Other questions? And so our motion is to do, what do you need us to do?
Just approve the resolution to be able to engage in starting the application process.
Perfect.
The motion? I mean, it is what it is, really.
Yeah, it is.
All right, Janet, thank you. Second. Thank you, Dina. All in favor?
This is the actual resolution there that was in your packet.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else in education? Move to business.
No, moving on to business. So Ms. Fulmer.
Good evening. Thank you very much. The financial statements tonight are two thirds of the way through the school year. That seems hard to believe because this is the last week of school, but we're only two thirds of the way through our fiscal year. If we look at our investment portfolio for all funds in the district, we're looking at $249 million at the end of April compared to 258 last year. 59.3% of that is general operating. At $148 million, just of the general operating funds. The investment portfolio, the benchmark yield is .06. I'm very heartened. It's stable for a moment. This is good news. I won't make any promises, but if it started all in the uptick, that would also be good news for our general operating investment earnings that does support our operations. This chart here shows all the financial institutions where we have our investment portfolio. Still wanted to point out to you that we do have, most of them are one-day liquidity. So it's very easy to move the funds back and forth. We do have a small amount, $11 million, small compared to the overall portfolio, of course. That's locked in for a little short term there, 58 days to maturity. But we've got a little uptick in yield, .13 with those funds. So that's a nice opportunity to get some yield without sacrificing liquidity. We look at the general fund only, $152 million, same time last year compared to 148 right now. And our revenue by source, this is the general fund only, last year, end of April, $144 million, 158 this year. Year-to-date, 9% increase overall. And we look at a different breakdown by revenue. Our budgeted revenue, $178 million through August 31st. Collected so far is 158% completion is substantially less than last year, an 88%. We do know also that we're We do know also that we're more reliant on state funding this year. Tax rate compression is also in the current legislation. And so we do look for this shift to the state funding to continue as our tax rate compresses. Total tax collections, our current year original levy percent is 98.64 year to date, 102% last year. And this trend was expected. We always like to see more than 100%, but with the winter storm and also with during COVID, this, I'm very glad to see that it is 98% year to date. Ag rollback for the year has been stable, $1,085 compared to 3.5 last year. This isn't something that we can predict or that we budget for necessarily. It's more a function of sales transactions of large tracts of land that were previously under ag exemption. Expenditure by major object, this is the general fund only, last year, $107 million. This year to date, 129% increase, 20.2%. That's tracking right along with our overall budget increase for the year. And again, the same look for here as we did with the revenue budgeted expenditures, $192 million for expenditures, year to date, 129, 67.2% completed. That's less of the budget completed year to date than this time last year. That's a good sign when I'm looking at, are we on track with our budget? We would be alarmed if we saw a much larger percent year to date than prior year. So we're always looking at, where are we compared to the same month last year? Athletics fund, net cash flow for the year, $174,000. It's behind prior year, but we understand why. And so that still is a very positive sign for the district. Food service fund, year to date, last year, we were experiencing COVID at the end of April. And this year, we have $380,000 positive. Now that, this is the last week of school, the revenue for the year has to sustain our expenses through June 30. And debt service, net cash flow, $118 million. We're going to have our next debt service payment, August 15th. We pay twice a year, February 15 and August 15. And so you see these buildup of funds and then we have the payout twice a year. And again, it was very heartening for me to see the visual images of the two schools. Now, I know what 79.5% completed looks like for Reeves Elementary School and Bryant, 93.6% expended on that as well.
Very good.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Ms. Fulmer, thank you very much. Any questions for her? No budget amendments either, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion to approve the financial investment tax report for April 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Kelly. Second? Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Great. Thank you, Ms. Fulmer.
Okay, we have Dr. Bradley. He's going to speak about food service management.
You have seen the updates on the budget throughout the year. Food service is an interesting topic. One of the things that Dr. Ferguson referenced earlier because of our low socioeconomic, economically disadvantaged numbers, the low amount that we receive from the federal government for the SIR funds. Well, food service is interesting because most food service companies in school districts are set up on the formula to make money off of the federal school lunch program. When your district is only 8% economically disadvantaged, it makes it very challenging. And so we have, over the years, gone out several times for bids to have a food service management company, which we've had for the last several years. The last couple of years, we've had Southwest Food Service Excellence, SFE has been a good partner over the last six years. They brought some new things to our district and for the most part, we were pleased with them. The last year has been challenging for obvious reasons. It's difficult for a food service company to make money if no kids are at school. And you know that our job is, what we try to do on food service is not profit off of our students, but make sure that we make enough money to cover costs. We have always done that in Prosper ISD over the last decade. We've never had a problem with that until last year. Last year, we had to dip into the surplus, the little surplus that we had to fund operations because we didn't have any kids at school. And then when our kids came back in the fall, they were not eating in the cafeteria at the rate at which they had previously. Now today, in the last month or two, it's returned to kind of what we would normally expect. But obviously, with not having kids at school created challenges. There were a few other things that we had with SFE that we felt it would be good to go back out to bid again. And so we took the opportunity to do that. We had these five companies that are listed on the screen here come in and give us presentations, look at our bid. We had a committee of campus administrators and district administrators, listen to the presentations, go through all of the bids, had feedback sessions, narrowed it down to two finalists, brought the two finalists back in, talked to them specifically about the challenges of Prosper ISD, the fast growth, the low socioeconomic numbers, and the challenges that that poses for a food service company. And then also, our food service companies manage the concession stands. We host quite a few events in Prosper ISD at the stadium. And our high schools, I would argue, are used more than any other high schools in the region for playoff games and all of those type of things. And so we talked to them specifically about the challenges. And then the greatest challenge that we have in Prosper ISD for a food service management company is hiring people. For wage earners, it is obviously difficult to live anywhere around our community. The affordability is not there for people that are hourly wage earners. And so we talked to all of these companies about what we would have to pay a livable wage where we could recruit workers. And so through all of that, we're bringing to you tonight the recommendation of Aramark Educational Services to provide our food service starting this summer. So the transition would happen in June and July. And so we're bringing that recommendation again, after several meetings, feedback from campus administrators, district administrators, we felt that Aramark's program would best serve our district moving forward. What you do in these oftentimes is it's a contract that you can extend on a yearly basis. You can do it up to five years. And so we're bringing to you tonight that we would recommend that we move to Aramark food service starting this summer. So I'll try to answer any questions. If you have any, I have a couple of guys here, Mark and Dave from Aramark are here as well, but certainly want to entertain any questions you might have about that.
I think I'll ask on behalf of all the teams, does this change the selections and the options that have been available the last couple of years?
Yes. In our high schools, as you know, we do have a couple of franchises that are there. We will not be taking those out. So Pizza Hut, Sonic at Rock Hill, Burger King at PHS, those will not be going away. But there will be some differences. One of the things that we liked about the Aramark approach is that we would have some rotation of different franchises. So there's certain things that are there all the time, obviously like those that I mentioned, but then we would be bringing things in from the outside and rotating through. They even have a program where local restaurants can get in and serve kids. Because one of the things you see with the cafeteria, one of the things that's hard for our food service companies is you just get tired of the same thing every day. And so that's one of the things we liked about the Aramark concept was their ability as a large company to bring different franchises in, to offer different things. You know that our middle schools and high schools are off the federal lunch program. And so the rules that are required by that, we don't have to follow. But there was a huge emphasis in our presentations as well on healthy foods. We have seen an uptick in our high schools of kids wanting vegan options, salad options, and this is one of the areas we think they can help further that because our kids want that and we just hadn't had a lot of opportunities for them.
Any other questions? We had a chance to look at the rubric a little bit. We had Aramark years ago, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
When I was first on the board. Any questions or comments? Dina, did you get a good answer for your question? Okay. Okay, well, if there are none, then I will entertain a motion. All right. Yeah, all right. Jen and Bill, all in favor? Great. Okay. Thank you.
Next is the consideration of possible action on a resolution extending the existing depository contract. Ms. Fulmer.
Thank you. The Texas Education Agency regulates very closely our school district contracts with their depository. And we went out to bid two years ago. TA permits bidding not less than every eight years. And it's a very expensive endeavor to change banks. And so once you really get that going with your interface with your ERP system and your bank recs, we were grateful. It used to be a much shorter time that TA allowed us to stay with our depository. So two years ago, we went with, changed banks and went with Farmers Bank and Trust. We've been very satisfied with Farmers Bank and would like to recommend that we extend for another two-year period.
Okay. Any comments or questions about that? You been happy with their service?
Yes, yes. And we're a very challenging group, if you know, looking at the investment reports, we've added a lot of investment pools and all those have to interface with the bank accounts and they've been very supportive of all of our changes.
Fabulous. All right. We'll entertain a motion for that then as well to extend the existing depository contract.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Second? Thank you, Jan. All in favor? Thank you. All right, last item before executive session, is that right?
Yes, sir. So this is actually just policy cleanup. So this is from the District of Innovation. So we had to then go in and mirror our actual policies. So we just need to go in and update those local policies. And I attached those in your packet so you could see where those edits were being made.
I saw that in the packet. Any comments or questions about what we got? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to make the changes to the board policy. Janet? All right, Deb?
I'll second.
Deb's second. All in favor? Great. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Bill, saying Kelly, Kelly's faster. All in favor? Okay, we will go into executive session. We will come back when we're done. We're talking about executive session things. We will come back and make those. You're welcome to stick around if you'd like. But not many people do. Thank you.
I will call the meeting back to order. Quick bit of business to take care of tonight. Need a motion on the Cleber, excuse me, Cleber Kim property for the amount recommended by admin for the purchase of that property.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the land.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So any discussion, questions, anything? All right. Everybody vote in favor? That's all of us. Okay, also need a motion to approve the resignations as laid out in the board packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All approved? All right. And then also need a motion to approve the new hires as laid out in the board packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. All approved? And that is all of us. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'll second.
Mr. Cavender, approved? That is all of us. That concludes the meeting. Thank you very much for coming and watching.